Good morning, good morning. It's good to have you here at Sunup on Seven. Thank you so much for staying tuned and for engaging with us today. I hope that everybody enjoyed our first conversation with Belize's heroes in National Fire Service and of course the US Embassy talking about the upcoming project. And it's beautiful to hear that we're thinking about how we can save lives. So if you're in the Cayo area and you want to participate in trainings and volunteer, stay tuned to their various Facebook pages for updates. It's time for our second conversation and it's exciting. It's summer and we're looking for something to do. Maybe you was a teen, you was a parent, you was a young person. So the Belize City Council is here to introduce their various summer activities that are going on. And let me say, there's something for everybody out there today. So let me introduce our guest. We have Michael Fritz, who's a Youth Community Support Officer. Michael, how are you?
I'm good and I'm excited for the summer.
Yeah, you're excited for the summer? I can feel the excitement. But it's good to meet you, like, you know, it's good to meet you in person. Of course, we've been sharing spaces for three months, so it's good to hear. And here, all the good work you're doing at the Belize City Council. Let me introduce your colleague, Mr. Devin Daly, who's a Programs Manager at the City Council. How are you, Devin?
I'm doing good. It's early.
It's early?
Yes.
I feel like both of our, like, the previous guests, I think it was Chief, he was the one that worried about this early. Y'all don't get up early, do you?
Um, I have a young kid, so...
Oh, but you have to get up early then if you have a young kid.
Well, actually, he just a transition, so...
Oh, so this is the better stage?
Yeah, this is the better stage.
I'm so sorry. Well, we're just pretending like it's the better stages now. We're back there.
Yeah, but nevertheless, thank you so much for joining us today on our couch to talk about the activities that are coming. Um, I'm sure that there's a lot of parents and young persons tune in because we do have, like, from kids, from five, six-year-old, tune in to Sunup on Seven. And they're ready to grab the information that's out there, right? So they might push their parents to be like, mommy, did you hear that? I want to attend. Yeah.
And there's a lot to attend. So as we've been talking before, even we got into this actual live, is you've been doing the most when it comes to summer. Like, I feel like you touched every single aspect that a child would want to be a part of, a young person, not even just child, a young person would want to be a part of. And so let's talk about all the events that we have and the accessibility, all the logistics behind it. So I'm not sure who wants to go first, but I want to start with the move-in night because that's the first one I see there. But Michael, you're looking at me. We're connecting.
Yeah, we're connecting. So let me start off by saying summer is in session with the Belize City Council. We're coming back hard and all the others will simply have to follow.
Oh, that's the excitement you were talking about. All right, all right. Okay, I'm feeling it now.
Now, since Renata mentioned the move-in night, we're taking it old school, you know, when you used to watch movies in the park, you kind of bring your own blanket, you have that vibe, you're hanging out with your family, you're getting that quality family time. That's what the Belize City Council and the Child Advisor Body is going to be doing for the entire summer and moving through the rest of the year. So it's not just a summer stint. We're riding the wave throughout the summer and the rest of the year to allow families to have that opportunity to bond, to watch a funny movie, to meet others and to be in an environment that's productive, laid back and very, very energetic.
And safe too as well. Like, I mean, people always are worrying about the safety of having your children go out, but this move-in night, we can all go together and just be able to share an ice cream pot, a blanket and watch whatever we do watch.
Exactly. So our first move-in night is actually going to be on the 9th of July, so next week, Saturday, starting at 7:00 PM at Digi Park. It's like the place to be. Everybody can bring their own blankets. You can bring your chairs if you know you're a little bit posh and you don't want to sit on the grass with the blanket. You can come out with your family and enjoy free movies provided by the Belize City Council and the Child Advisor Body. For those who don't know about the Child Advisor Body, it's a group of young people, eight to seventeen, working along with the council. This idea came from them. They were like, we got to do move-in nights. We want to be out in the park, we want to have entertainment and activities for young people like us. We don't feel like we have that vibe in the city. Anytime we want to do something, we have to go to San Ignacio or to San Pedro or something, but we're bringing back the vibe to Belize City. So our move-in night, our first one is on July night.
So you already have the movie selected?
Yes. So we're looking at the most recent Adam Sandler movie, Also. That's going to be it. And it's going to be a vibe. We're going to put in a little bit of surprise with the move-in night. I mean, we have to keep you guys on your Ps and Qs. Where the City Council, where the Child Advisor Body, so we have to set the trend. So I'm not going to give much information on what's happening.
Okay, okay. So they just have to stay tuned to y'all's social media to know what's next movie. Um, so you're saying this is gonna run start summer, but it's for the rest of the year? How freak, what's gonna be the frequency of this?
So for summer, we're going to be looking at two move-in nights per month. And as we go through the rest of the year, we're going to be in one a month to keep the momentum going and kind of have it as a running save the date. So you know, whenever you see the flyers on the Belize City Council's social media platforms, whether it be Facebook or Instagram, or you check out the Child Advisor Body's platforms, you see it, you save it and you show up. That's the plan.
Beautiful. I love it.
I love you. Bring your whole posh. I miss move-in nights. I miss those, like, because it's gonna be like on a big screen. You come out, you have a really time. You'll have, you could buy from the different vendors or so. It's gonna be fun to walk around a little bit, meet people, we're gonna meet long time because school just to get back kind of normal.
Right.
So it's great for socialization. We need socialization.
Definitely. All right, Devin, so let's bring you into the conversation. So is, so there's move-in nights, there's summer camp. What's, what's happening with the summer camp?
Um, I'm gonna hop into Pee Wee Basketball.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Tell us about that.
Yeah, Pee Wee Basketball is, is a mini basketball for seven to nine year, seven to twelve-year-olds.
Okay.
Um, this was a vision directly that came from the mayor. Um, he wanted to kind of touch a age group that nothing has been offered for this summer. We have the, City Council usually offers a summer basketball tournament, which we cater, which we cater to three hundred kids between the ages of twelve to seventeen. But the national tournament is, is catering to that age range right now, this summer, and also senior competition. So instead of reinventing the wheel, you know, we just decided to go a different direction, you know, on trail blaze on our own path. Um, and so that's what we're trying to do, start development from a young age. And then in the, in the Christmas time, we're actually going to do our, our usual youth fifteen, seventeen. So eventually, we're looking to have these kids transition into that and create this continuity.
They're warming up in the summer.
Yeah.
Yep.
So this age range is seven to twelve years old?
Seven to twelve.
And it's boys and girls?
It's boys and girls.
We just want, shout out for my, my female population. They want to make sure that we get punished.
So how, can you share with us the logistics for registration?
Yep. So registration is free. Um, the forms will be on our Facebook page. Right now, we haven't confirmed our venue. Hint, hint, we want the civic center. Everybody wants a civic, but we also understand the expenses.
Look there and be like, hint, hint.
So we're looking to have it at the civic center because the unique thing about mini basketball is that the rims and the court sizes need to be adjusted.
Oh, yes, that's true.
And the ball size is also different. So we're not looking to play at a normal ten-foot hoop, we're looking at a seven-foot hoop.
Yeah.
The, the width and the length of the court is about fifteen foot less. You know, just trying to optimize the space for these kids to actually feel comfortable, you know, and get the love of the game over. The purpose of this summer program is not necessarily who comes in first, second or third. It's about healthy competition and like you said, socializing, um, you know, our young people, getting them to, to this positive engagement.
So seven to twelve years old, we haven't gotten...
Registration is free.
Registration is free. We haven't gotten the venue as yet, but we, we looking at civic, civic, we see you.
We see you.
See you, boo boo.
We can manifest it. When is, when is the basketball?
So this is looking to start the twenty-fifth of July. Me and Mike, we're two months in.
So there's still time to register. That's a good thing. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we're looking at the twenty-fifth of July. It's gonna be a three-week tournament. And I saw the back-to-school up there. The ending of the, of the summer, of the mini basketball is that the seven to nine-year-olds will compete against each other. The ten to twelve-year-olds will compete against each other. But the first week of the summer camp, which will be three weeks long, it's development. So we have a professional or semi-professional trainer who's certified with USA Basketball, Mr. Oscar Reese. He, along with the Belize City Council staff who plays basketball, we're, we're trying to give back. We're gonna do development for the first week. Learning footwork, rules of the game, how to pass, how to dribble. And then week two and week three, we're going to do competition. But the last day of the tournament, we're having it on a Sunday. And we're gonna have, we're gonna invite the families out to, to see the two different age groups play. And then we're having our big, which we do every summer, um, the standard bearers versus the counselors and mayor.
Oh.
Yeah. And the proceeds, and the proceeds will go to our back-to-school drive happening this summer as well.
Okay. Wow.
So do you wanna, so since we're talking about the back-to-school drive, do you want to talk about that?
I'll pass the reins.
All right, so we're...
Hit it for us, Mike.
I love it. I love it. I love how we bounce.
So I know that summer just started, but we kind of have to start thinking about getting back into the school year. You know, the fresh bag, the school supplies, being back in the classroom, learning, article. Um, ensuring that children have the access to education, Article twenty-eight of the Convention on the Rights of the Child. So we're hitting...
Put it out there.
Yes. We're hitting, uh, hitting it big this year for our back-to-school drive. Our goal is to furnish five hundred kids with a startup to go back to school. So we're talking about a school bag with supplies, not an empty school bag, to get you back into the classroom. So you might be wondering, five hundred, that's a big number. How are you going to do that? Everybody's having a back-to-school drive, but we're innovative. This is a collaborative event again by the Belize City Council and the Child Advisor Body of Belize City. These young people are transsetting, they're innovative, they want to give back. So what we'll be doing, uh, this is an appeal to anybody that's watching at home or abroad. Let's get our students back into the school year.
Yes.
Started properly with school supplies. So it's an appeal for you guys to donate. Whatever you might have, if it's a couple books you want to donate, if it's some pens, whatever it is. Uh, there's that old saying, one-one cocoa fills this basket.
Yeah.
Well, one-one book or one-one pen fills five hundred bags. And that's what we're trying to do here. And it's something that we're going to be covering for primary school students and as well high school students.
Oh, nice.
Boys and girls from the various municipalities across the city. So it's us, the council and the Child Advisor Body and partners giving back to ensure that children have that inalienable right to an education. Now, if you're interested in donating, there is contact information on the flyer. You can also reach out to the Belize City Council and our amazing customer service personnel will put you in contact with us at the Programs Department uh, to register or to get your supplies donated.
And there's a, I'm seeing a deadline for donations, yeah?
Yes. So deadline specific color for those that might be out of the country.
Okay.
They're watching this and you know what? I need to give back.
Look at them there. They're looking at you.
I need to give back to my people in Belize.
Because they're full, Mike.
You have until the July fifteenth. Hit up Target, hit up Best Buy, hit up whatever store that you can think about. Get those supply, Dollar Store as well, because those are some good deals.
Exactly.
Hit them up.
Yeah.
Hat the barrels, make contact with us at the Belize City Council so we can get those supplies. So furnish and give our children the opportunity to get back to the school year prepared with supplies so that they can access education. So it's an appeal. Give whatever you can so that we can help our children get back into the school year. It's summer, yes, but we have to think in terms of the future, how are we going to get back into the school year? We want to be fresh, we want to make sure that they're prepared so that our teachers, you know, don't have gray hair at the beginning of the school semester.
Parents.
Our parents don't have that stress in terms of, I need to buy books, bags, everything. And you know, we're in the phase where everybody wants to have that name brand bag and everything of that sort. So alleviate some of the stress on parents and teachers this summer. Donate, give back to those in need. Hit up the Belize City Council and the Child Advisor Body to, to donate supplies for our back-to-school drive.
So Michael, on that same note, because I know people sometimes refrain from donating because they don't know who's gonna be getting what they donate. Tell us a little bit of how you're selecting who deserves these five hundred bags.
So what we did last year, well, January of this year, when we went back to face-to-face classes, we reached out to multiple schools across the city. And what we did was a voucher system. So schools got vouchers to hand out to their most needed children. And then those families would come to the City Council to collect the packages. So we're talking equity, we're, we're spreading the love all over the city to all high schools or all primary schools. We're trying to reach as far as we can so that everybody has an opportunity to get a bag. You come to the City Council with your voucher, which is stamped and signed, and redeem a bag. So we're trying to make it as possible, as much as possible, to get the reach way out there. So we're reaching out to our schools through the District Education Center and our personnel that we have to get more schools and more students as recipients for the back-to-school drive.
Hey, beautiful. So we already talked move-in night, back-to-school drive, Pee Wee Basketball League. So there's summer camp at Urban Gardens. Who's taking it?
Okay. So let's start off with Urban Gardens.
So Urban Garden. I know, we don't match them, but I love this. Okay?
It's very cool, honestly.
So, um, similar to like what Renata said, optimizing and getting more in touch with our safe spaces in Belize City. Belize City is about three square miles, three and a half square miles. And we have about sixty thousand residents, more or less. And across, um, it's, it's split up in ten constituencies. And in each constituency, we have vacant, um, abandoned lots. Our sanitation team usually does a great job with debushing them. But a lot of time, they harbor loitering, pests and, and a lot of hazards, you know, especially in the hurricane season. So since 2018, it was a manifesto promise for us to transform these vacant abandoned lots across Belize City to either flowering gardens or vegetable growing gardens. And this is our first pilot project, um, happening in the Lake, Lake Independence constituency. And, um, it's stationed in a double lot. The way it's set up is that the City Council went into a lease agreement with a property owner. We contacted him, um, we offset their taxes, um, for the duration that we're, that we're leasing the property for this project. Um, and also he becomes a stakeholder within the project. So for this project, we're, we're initially, we're growing, um, bell peppers and also jalapeno peppers. Um, I think we sent in some pics that we already have some growth going on. Um, we're engaging the community.
Yes, we do. Green tums loading.
So we're engaging the community. Um, we've also trained them with, with partnership with the ministry on urban gardening best practices. Um, we have full support from, um, the mayor, his counselors and Citco. Um, um, we also have support from the Deputy PM. Um, we also have support from the Belize Red Cross, who sponsored our greenhouse. Um, so this is a full circle kind of thing, um, and we're moving forward. We're very, we're very, very much proud of this project because they're, like, this is one of the first um, that the council is doing. And like we said, we're, we're trying to replicate this across ten different constituencies. And this...
This is the first one?
Oh, yes, this is the first one.
Ah, it looks so annoying.
Yeah.
No, definitely. I, I really, I really love the concept of urban gardenings, given that we have to teach people how to, like, produce their own food.
Correct.
Yeah, it, it increases the dependency on, on so much things and...
You're missing man, Tim.
No, it's cool. I saw the pepper.
I can't grow stuff like that. My snake planted.
You can, you can. You just gotta take time and respond. And that's the thing that gardening, like, teaches people so much, like, like skills, like, like, uh, responsibility, patience, interacting with the soil, benefits. And you know, like, it's so good to, like, eat what you plant. And there's like, you know, like, when you're seeing your peppers grow and you're like, oh my gosh, I planted this. Like, you enjoy it more, right?
I'm questioning just on that idea, because it's in Lake I. Are the residents involved in it? Are the children involved? Like, who would grow, who could they make lessons of grow the bell peppers and all these things?
That's a very good question. We actually, um, this project started off, like I said, it was an abandoned lot. And so we had residents from the community actually debush it for us. Um, and then we started the process of filling the property. And they also volunteered their time, no pay, no stipend, nothing as yet. Um, they also volunteered their time to get the training from the Ministry Agriculture on how to deal with a greenhouse. Um, going from trellising, irrigation, all of that kind of stuff.
Right.
Um, and that's how we're, that's what we're doing. They're actually our, our greenhouse site managers. Currently, um, we're in a process of developing this, this land into something that we envision to be a full circle. Um, and there actually are watch people, um, for this property. You know, I, I, I overheard the gentleman earlier talking about the community being the first responders.
Yeah.
This is a project that, you know, that, that really embodies that.
You know, I, I, I'm absolutely fascinated that you gave the training on how to, like, do you like a greenhouse? Because they can replicate in their home if they'd not want to be, like, readily involved in, in this one. I'm also thinking, how, how, how will the, the produce be shared? Is it gonna be sold in a market? Uh, what's, what's gonna be done with the produce?
We're all about empowerment. So we're engaging the community members and we're making a microeconomy for them to be able to sell their produce. And also we're looking at finalizing what would be the end product when it comes to the yield. We're looking at, I think it's about eight thousand...
Ten.
Ten thousand pounds of produce over an eight-month period. So that's a lot.
That's a lot.
With this, with this greenhouse yet?
Yeah.
With this, this garden?
Yes.
Ten, ten thousand?
Yes.
I didn't know that. I really listened.
Yes. So our plan is to engage stakeholders, uh, local businesses, restaurants and so forth, to get them to buy the produce and utilize the produce so that we can get profitability for the product or for the project as well. Invest more so that we can jump from our pilot project to getting them in every single constituency across the country. We're also looking at, uh, some variations of charitable donations as well. We're still in the finalization process of, uh, working, putting the last finishing touches on our greenhouse approach in terms of what happens afterwards, getting ready to launch a second one within the coming months. So we're busy, we're engaging our, our community members, we're empowering our people. That's what we do at the council.
I'm just so loving this.
You know, like, I, I'm envisioning something, like, so in Miami, in Wynwood, there's like urban gardens, but then they would bring like food trucks. Like, on Saturdays, they would have like various food trucks all over the plot while the gardens are there. For one, it gives people an appreciation of what's happening with the gardens. You know, they learn more about the produce and that kind of thing. But they also, like, use the same produce within the, within the trucks, right? So it, it was really, really cool being in that space, people interacting and seeing, you know, produce being used into something that can be consumed. So people learn recipes and that kind of thing. I thought it was, like, pretty impressive, um...
I think, I know, and Michelle was talking about the therapeutic, um...
Aspect of gardening.
Aspect of being a person that owns a garden, but also I think there's this sense of ownership, knowing that you created this, like, this is your baby. Like, you talked to your plant, you've been observing it for the couple months and it produced something for you. So I can clearly see, like, getting the community involved was the best option in the entire, you know, way in which you did this whole project because now this is their project too as well.
Right.
And they're gonna take it over and they're gonna keep it sustainable, especially if they're reaping the products and they also got the training too as well. So they have the necessary skills and capacity to make this be even bigger than it needs to be.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. So I am loving it.
And we're planting jalapeno peppers as well. We all know that everybody loves that stuff jalapeno, just putting that out there. So there's going to be a lot of that, you know? Getting into the trending snack food.
Whenever I'm ready for sample, I have one on back, yeah?
Yeah.
We'll also be inviting you to get your hands dirty. You mentioned earlier that your snake plants were dying.
Yeah.
Hint, hint, we can help you get those green tums.
Please help, because I pray for my mangroves where I plant butt-by-butt in would be because I helped plant mangroves. I'm, I, I hope they survive at this point.
Don't sell yourself short.
No, I don't know, man.
So let's talk about the summer camp now. Yeah?
Okay, at last, but definitely not least. Usually every year, we partner to host a summer program, but we reinvented the wheel and we wanted to be innovative. So this year, we're introducing the Youth Innovation Incubator Summer Program, transsetting.
Okay.
Did you repeat that name?
Can you please say that name again slowly?
Youth Innovation Incubator Summer Program. So you're wondering, is this like a science experiment or something?
I hear you.
We're transsetting. So, uh, we're looking at music. We know that steel pan is a vibe.
Definitely.
Definitely a vibe. We're getting into the September celebration season shortly. We're looking at, looking at, uh, financial literacy for young people. So learning to save, it's the summer, we want to look fresh when you get back to school, you know, when... I don't know if it's still the same, but when we were in high school and you had that, that color clothes day, you had to dress apart.
You had to look.
Like, literally, it was your only opportunity to show up. And specifically, if you went to a high school like Edward P. York, you only had like one of those opportunities for like a two-month period. So, yes, so financial literacy. We're also looking at communication, self-development. We're looking at entrepreneurship, teaching these young people to become their own bosses. Now, when it comes to the entrepreneurship, our end goal, we all know that this, the council has our Super Sale every two months.
Yeah.
One is coming up at the end of July. Not a coincidence that we're doing our summer program because our summer program recipients or program participants for the entrepreneurship portion are going to be marketing products at the downtown Super Sale.
I love that.
So we're empowering them, giving them the soft skill, giving them seed funding to actually create products to sell. So to get them, um, into the whole idea of becoming your own boss, the whole process behind it and everything. We're also looking at multiple sports disciplines. We all know that the council has its premier basketball team, the Dragons. And we all know that we're one of the best. I don't want to say nothing much more about that.
That is Friday.
Yes, game is on Friday. We're one of the best. We're going to be incorporating our Dragon team not only in the Youth Innovation Incubator Summer Program for the basketball component, but also the Pee Wee Basketball. We're giving back. We're looking at swimming. Now, how many people can say that they've actually learned how to swim rather than just running into water and trying to figure it out on your own?
I could survive, Michael. No going.
I can survive, but can you swim?
Surviving is a way of swimming. But tell me.
Yes. So for that, we're also offering swimming as a component of our summer program through the YWC. So kids will be learning, skills will be doing, uh, mini competitions and so forth. We're also looking at incorporating other aspects. So getting our kids that holistic development. It's summer, we're not going to, to confine you to a classroom, but we're going to be innovative in our approach. Getting to hear from the kids from themselves, getting to incorporate and participate along with the kids, getting their energies up, teaching them new skills to be innovative students. We're in 2022, we need to kind of take up stuff a bit. We need to be innovative. We need to create the next generation of leaders or, or different positions. We need to be innovative in that way. So that's the goal that we're going for with this summer program. And like, might I mention, every single course offering is absolutely free. Nobody pays anything for our summer program.
Okay.
And it's our way of giving back. Now you're wondering, how do I get my children signed up for this? Let me mention that we're giving children the opportunity to choose what courses they want to participate in.
Just gonna ask that, because you got a lot.
Consulting, Article twelve. Very much sorry, but I'm very passionate about convention and the rights of the child. Article twelve, giving children the right to choose. So after consulting with your parents, you can hit up the Belize City Council's Facebook page or Instagram, the Child Advisor Body of Belize Cities, Facebook and Instagram. And there's a flyer and a link that you can click to apply.
Okay.
There's still a bit of time to apply. Spaces are going quickly.
I was just gonna say, is there a capacity? How much?
So we're looking at for each course offering, twenty juniors and twenty seniors.
And when you say juniors, age range for me?
Eight to thirteen and our seniors are fourteen to seventeen.
Okay.
So we're looking for forty for each course offering. And let me quickly run through those. So we're looking at financial literacy, teaching them how to save. We're looking at building a better you, self-development and communications. We're looking at steel pan, a whole vibe there. We're also looking at different sporting disciplines, basketball, volleyball, swimming, and also teaching them to become their own bosses through entrepreneurship. So you can apply via the link that's on the Facebook or other social media platforms. We still have a bit of time. We do start on Monday. And it's an entire month-long summer program.
Yeah.
Filled with activities, filled with mini field trips, so you get an opportunity to meet the council. I know everybody sees the, the old commercial building and it's that decon by, by the swing bridge.[1643.18] But a lot of people, specifically children, don't have an opportunity to see what happens behind, behind those closed doors. So we're bringing the council to the people. We're being very much innovative. We're bringing them in. We're being inclusive in our approach and that's our goal for the summer. So again, the Youth Innovation Incubator Summer Program.
Okay.
From July fourth to twenty ninth, hit up our social media platforms for the flyer and the link to apply. And once you've applied, our team will be reaching out to you guys to coordinate and give you schedules and so forth, so that come Monday. It's a whole vibe. It's a fit with the.
And you know how to go there because depending on what you choose, that would be a specific time where you'd be getting that lesson, right?
And they can find all of those things on, on the social media platform and when you went.
And also.
I, I really, I really like commend the initiative because we were having a conversation on Monday with the folks that are doing the. The, the, the community project in Faber's Road and he was saying that on his master thesis, like he realized a lot, a lot of folks, like they would. Just get taught about academia and you have to like work in an office rather than teaching them like life skills and, and hearing the whole. Summer programs that the Belize City Council now is offering, it teaches people all of those life skills that are very, very critical.
Chance to choose what they want.
Children. So I commend that. Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us on our couch, giving us all these exciting opportunities. If you missed this conversation, you can go back and you can tune into our YouTube channel, look at the clip, where you find out more details. Or visit the Facebook page of the Belize City Council to know what's happening, how to go registering and how you can benefit from it.
It's super exciting because guys, we're having moving nights. We're having summer cr- camps with a million and one.
Summer cramps.
Well, some people will be having summer cramps if you have something else. We're not gonna go into that.
Swimming and basketball thing, I'm thinking you can get cramps from that.
Oh, yes, men can get cramps, but not for, thanks babe. I really appreciate that. Come on, we have to book me. You can't, you can't leave me hanging, Kevin. You have to book me.
Sorry, bro.
So we have summer camps, camps with a million and one different um opportunities, courses that you can be able to check. Whether it be swimming, whether it be um learning about communication, entrepreneurship, and you get the opportunity to be in this super sale that's coming up. Ending of July too as well. So all of these options for our young people. There's gonna be the back to school drive, the P V, I just love to say that word. The P V basketball league where you can be able to learn valuable skills, play against each other and as well see your family support you in a tournament to as well be a part of that. And of course, urban gardens, we're, we're having a pilot project right now in Lake I, but it's gonna be branching out into other different lots that I know you said, hold on, don't identify different lots.
Right.
Starting off here, but it's gonna grow and expand. Contact them. I know Michael or Devon who are ready and willing and waiting for you guys to like.
Now we see why you're excited.
The weight excitement is, it's, it's there and people, you wanna do something for summer. It's gonna go by fast, but you wanna get the most out of it. Have fun, build great partnerships, relationships, learn and just have fun because it's been a while since we've had summer like this.
Exactly.
It's really been a while. And so if you can't go fly out and catch a flight like most people or whatever it is. You don't need to do that because your country, your city right now, Belize City Council is providing you all you need to have a jam packed, fun filled, exciting summer. Don't miss out on opportunity, guys. Grab it right now. And so go and follow all the Facebook page, the Instagram pages, message in and find out. You might get a chance to get a tour, you know, the city council and all these things. Meet the mayor and everyone. So they're once in a lifetime opportunities. Do not let it slip from your reach. Parents, register your child. Talk to them about it. And so with that, we thank you so much, gentlemen, for being here. Thank you for being so innovative, you know, breaking the barriers, not reinventing the wheel like you've mentioned before, but. Really sitting down and thinking through what can be applied. Again, to the child advisor board, big up the young people, man. They're so dynamic.
I, I have to end with that. And if you want to find out more information, obviously follow the uh Child Advisor Body of Belize Cities Instagram page. Official cab underscore B C. And also follow the Belize City Council's social media platforms. Sustain the loop as we go about serving the people. Our slogan is about the people, always about the people. So that's what we're doing this summer.
Do it this summer and we continue true. Ah, yeah, wrong. You know, man, Michael, you know, but with that, we do know that. Producers telling us we have to go to a commercial break. So with that, guys, we go to our next commercial break. When we're back, we're gonna be having a very exciting conversation. Stay tuned. You don't wanna miss.